I'm going to call the board meeting, ready to board meeting to order March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five. I do want to welcome the parents and the grandparents who came tonight to see your students, your children. We do appreciate you all coming out on a Monday night. It's important to us. I know Mr. Trevino has been on the board sixteen years. He told me one of the best things about being on the board is this evening where we get to see your children, your students come in and show us everything they've done well. A lot of good things happening in public education. We see that tonight. I read a Greek proverb. It said, "A society grows great when old men plant trees in whose shade they will never sit." And it speaks to the importance of foresight and long-term thinking for the benefits of future generations. And I think of our teachers, educators, our security personnel, maintenance, custodians, they all do that for your children, for our students. They won't see the benefits, but we know that we're doing the right thing. So thank you for coming out tonight. Mr. Dr. Salazar, we have someone for the pledge?
Mr. Henderson, members of the board, this evening we have students here from Los Fresnos United. And here to introduce us to the students who will lead the pledge is the proud principal of Los Fresnos United, Ms. Elisa Pinera.
Good evening, Mr. Henderson, members of the board and Dr. Salazar. My name is Elisa Pinera, and I am the proud principal of Los Fresnos United. I am honored to present two outstanding students and siblings this evening, Alani Rodriguez and Luis Rodriguez. Alani Rodriguez is an exemplary student and a dedicated role model for her peers. She is a proud ninth grade student at Los Fresnos United and the daughter of Brenda and Álvaro Rodriguez. Alani draws her inspiration from her mother, who motivates her daily to remain focused and strive to be the best version of herself. Alani's favorite class is Stars, where she serves as the Stars manager, demonstrating leadership and commitment. She is passionate about dance and hopes to pursue it beyond high school. Additionally, Alani is enrolled in an education and training course, which she appreciates for the broad career opportunities it provides. Recently, Alani attended a meeting that inspired her to explore a career in special education with the goal of becoming a diagnostician. Her desire to help others reflects her compassionate nature and dedication to making a difference. Alani plans to attend the University of Texas Rio Grande Valley to achieve her academic and professional goals. Outside of school, Alani is currently caring for a three-week-old pig named Rosie, which requires feeding every two hours, a testament to her sense of responsibility and nurturing spirit. Alani's ambition, leadership, and care for others makes her an outstanding representative of Los Fresnos United. I present to you Ms. Alani. Luis Rodriguez exemplifies leadership and serves as an outstanding role model among his peers. He is the son of Brenda and Álvaro Rodriguez, and he draws significant inspiration from his father's strong work ethic and dedication. Luis's favorite subject is math. He enjoys the challenge of problem solving and appreciates the various methods available to reach a solution. His analytical mindset and determination to find the best approach reflect his commitment to academic growth. Beyond the classroom, Luis is actively involved in extracurricular activities. He played on the JV dark soccer team and is a dedicated member of DECA, where he continues to develop his leadership and business skills. Luis aspires to attend either Texas A&amp;M University or the University of Texas, Rio Grande Valley, to pursue a career as an electrician or entrepreneur. Inspired by his father's entrepreneurial spirit, he hopes to one day open his own business. Luis also works alongside his father at the family ranch, where he finds peace and fulfillment. He cherishes the quiet moments surrounded by nature, from the sound of the wind and the swaying grass to the calls of the cattle. This connection to nature and the time spent with his father continue to shape his character and values. Luis's strong work ethic, academic excellence, and dedication to his future make him a shining example of perseverance and leadership. I present to you Luis.
Ladies and gentlemen, these students are here to help lead us in the pledge. Will everyone please rise for the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. All you all may be seated. I will ask the parents if they are present, if they could stand up and be acknowledged. Thank you for coming. Mr. Jeremiah.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Donald Henderson?
Present.
Mr. Martín Castillo?
Present.
Jesús Amaya, I'm present. Ms. Quintero is not present. Mr. Rubén Trevino?
Present.
Ms. Sandra García? Mr. Mottis is not here. Dr. Gonzalo Salazar?
Present.
And our counsel, Ms. Casey Villafuerte.
Thank you, Mr. Maya. Item number five, district recognitions, Los Fresnos High School. Dr. Salazar?
Mr. Henderson, members of the board, at this time I'd like to introduce the proud principal of Los Fresnos High School, Mr. Justin Stumbow.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board and Dr. Salazar. As you know, it's been a banner year this year at Los Fresnos High School musically. We have so much to be proud of, whether it's marching band or contest band. And so I don't want to steal all of Mr. Soloy's thunder tonight. He's going to be here to present some of our tremendously talented musicians and not just musicians, but students that we have at Los Fresnos High School. So I invite Mr. Andy Soloy, our director of music, up here to introduce our jazz orchestra and solo and ensemble students.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board and Dr. Salazar. Thank you for the opportunity to recognize a few of the outstanding achievements of our band program and the students who make our program successful. I would like to thank everyone for their support, but I would especially like to thank the students for their hours of hard work and their commitment to excellence, both in the band hall and in the classroom. If there are any parents of band members in the audience this evening, please stand and be recognized, and thank you for your support. Tonight, we are here to recognize our UIL State Solo and Ensemble Qualifiers and our Jazz Orchestra. We'll begin with the UIL State Solo and Ensemble Qualifiers. To qualify for the state solo competition is no easy task. Students must not only prepare a Class One solo, which are professional level solos, they must also perform it from memory and receive a first division from their judge at the regional level competition. These students will be competing at the state competition in Maine. Marco Costa, piano. Diego Lopez, flute. Evelyn Quintero, oboe. Sarah Morel, bassoon. Judy Mir, clarinet. Jonathan Quintero, trumpet. Roxana Sánchez, trumpet. Lorraine Villanueva, French horn. Jonathan Aranda, euphonium. Jesriel Hinohosa, tuba. And Luigi López, percussion. I know you've heard about the exceptional work this next group of students are doing in representing our community on local and state level. Their hard work and dedication to their craft have positioned them as one of the top jazz ensembles in our state. Our jazz orchestra was featured in a clinic for band directors at the Texas Band Masters Association Convention in San Antonio in July, where band directors from around the state learned about what we're doing in Los Fresnos to make this group exceptional. Also, for the second year in a row, the LFHS Jazz Orchestra was named a national winner in the 2024 National Jazz Honors Mark of Excellence Competition. I am excited to share with you that our jazz orchestra won first place in the statewide Texas Music Educators Association Jazz Competition and was featured in a full-length performance at the TMEA Convention in San Antonio last month. Please join me in recognizing each of these students. Damon Rodriguez, lead alto. Eliseo Gamboa, second alto. Adrian Perez, lead tenor. Marco Peña, second tenor. Austin Vela, Barry sax. Johanna Flores, Barry sax. Alonso Rivas, lead trumpet. Jonathan Quintero, second trumpet. Roxana Sánchez, third trumpet. Sofia Trevino, fourth trumpet. Jesús Larson, fifth trumpet and co-lead. Mark Torres, lead trombone and bass trombone. Rick Roscoe, third trombone. Eric Mueller, third trombone. Justin Roman, bass trombone and co-lead. Manny Blanco, drums. Marco Costa, piano. Noah Ramirez, bass. Jonathan Bautista, percussion. Johnny Rosas, percussion. And their directors, David Leclerc and Patrick Anderson.
Thank you so much for all your dedication. And the parents, thank you for coming out tonight. We know it's a Monday, so if you all want to stay, you're welcome to stay, but otherwise have a nice evening. Okay, item number six on the agenda, Dr. Salazar, district presentations, Most Innovative Teacher Award, Noble Texas Builders LLC.
Mr. Henderson, members of the board, at this time I'd like to invite up to the lectern Ms. Vega with Noble Builders.
Good evening, everyone. It's truly an honor to be here today representing Noble Texas Builders as we celebrate an outstanding educator whose dedication and innovation have made a profound impact in the classroom. At Noble, we believe in investing not just in buildings, but in the future of our communities. Throughout our summer teacher externship program, we've had the privilege of working alongside passionate teachers who bring real-world application into their classrooms, bringing students, inspiring students to see beyond textbooks and into the possibilities of their future careers. Tonight, we are proud to recognize Ms. Priscilla Casañeda as a recipient of the Noble Most Innovative Teacher Award. Earning this recognition was no easy task. She was chosen from a competitive pool of ten other teacher applicants representing six different school districts. This recognition is a testament of her exceptional innovation and dedication to her students. What makes this even more special is that Ms. Casañeda is the second teacher from Los Fresnos United School to receive this honor. Last year, Ms. Patricia Hernández was also awarded the Noble Most Innovative Teacher Award, proving that this district continues to cultivate some of the brightest and most forward-thinking educators. To honor Ms. Casañeda's achievements, we are awarding her $1,500 as a token of appreciation for her hard work and dedication. Additionally, we're providing $2,000 for her classroom, ensuring that her students continue to benefit from enhanced resources and innovative learning opportunities. Dr. Salazar, thank you for your continued support of our partnership and for fostering a school district that nurtures such outstanding educators. It's clear that this district is home to some of the most talented and forward-thinking teachers, true gems in the world of education. Their passion and innovation are reshaping the future, and we at Noble are honored to support and celebrate their success. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you all. Do I have any family here tonight with us that we could recognize? Would please stand up, please, let us recognize you. Thank you and congratulations. And again, feel free to be excused. I know it's a Monday night, but you're welcome to stay. Item number seven, public charades, 2023-2024 State Compensatory Evaluation. Dr. Salazar?
Mr. Henderson and members of the board, this evening we present, we're meeting a requirement by presenting the state compensatory evaluation. And here to present 2324 data on state comp education is our deputy superintendent, Mrs. Adána Marosivaja.
Good evening, Mr. President and members of the board, Dr. Salazar. It is a requirement from the Texas Education Code that we present a state compensatory education annual evaluation. As you're aware, we do receive state comp funds, and we use them with our students. And this is an evaluation of how those funds are being used and the progress that we've made with that, with those funds. To start off with, I'm going to start with the program description. The purpose of our state comp education program is to increase achievement for students who are at risk of dropping out, who are educationally disadvantaged students or just at-risk students. Our funds need to supplement what we currently have. I always think back of Mr. Sevayos, who would say, "We're not supplanting," but we need to supplement our services to those students from what our original, all our student population receives. They have to meet some criteria. There's fifteen criteria that they must meet in order to be identified as at-risk and receive some services. These are the fifteen indicators, the fifteen criteria. I'm not going to go over all of them. I just highlighted some of them that I wanted to stress. If a student has been retained, if they did not perform satisfactorily on an assessment, in this case, in our case, a star. A student who is pregnant, a student who has been placed in an alternative education program, someone who has already been previously reported as dropout of school, they come back, they're already identified as at-risk. Emerging bilingual students, while they're being served in the program, they're an at-risk. Students who are homeless, or any student who has been incarcerated or whose parents have been incarcerated. Those are just a couple of those that are underlined. It just means that once you're identified with those indicators, you're identified for the rest of your educational career here in Los Fresnos. So those cannot be dropped. If you're retained, you'll be at risk for all your twelve years here in Los Fresnos or in any school district. Our funding, again, is to increase the achievement of students who are at risk of dropping out. It's a supplemental program. We provide academic instruction to support the intent for the state comp program. And it is also must be included in our district improvement plan and our campus improvement plan. So any interventions must be identified in our plans. Our program funding for fiscal year 2024, we received a budget of $10,195,375. Our expenditures for last year were $6,989,668.93. The remaining funds are rolled over for this coming year. The expenditure breakdown, $5 million, $5.9 million goes into payroll costs, extra duty pay, tutoring, intervention, summer school, $213,074 professional and contractual services. I know here we have CIS, or Community in Schools. That's what we pay for. We're serving middle school and high school students. And sometimes we bring in a professional learning to our district, and we paid out of there supplies and material. Last year, we bought iPads and laptops and other supplies that the teacher might need in the classrooms. And then operating cost, $19,012. And that was mostly on travel, on attending in services that might be out of the region. And I know there was three schools that attended a conference, and we paid it out of that operational expenses. On demographics, we're looking at at-risk and not-at-risk. The fifteen indicators are very fluid, except with the exception of those three that were underlined. Some of our students might be identified as risk for one criteria, and then a year later, they're out because they probably passed a star or are no longer an emerging bilingual. So then that at-risk criteria drops. So that's why it's very fluid. If you looked at 2023, our at-risk was at 52.4, a little, a slight decrease from 2223 when we were at 53.8. So these are our students who are at-risk in comparison to not-at-risk students. And then we look at economic disadvantage. This is how we received our funds for state comp, based on the number of economically disadvantaged students. We've always been at about eighty percent. You look at 2122, 79.9, eighty percent on 2223, and a slight decrease in 2324 to 79.1. So that is our economic disadvantage and not economic disadvantaged students. So one of the requirements is that we look at the achievement of our students in comparison to those that are not at risk. So that's how we evaluate the program. I did it in both forms, but I'd like to see it look at the table. And if you look at, the table talks about students who are at meets. And we look at meets for third through fifth grade because we want to ensure that the students are performing at grade level. So that's why we do it meets, and we do not look at approaches. So we will look at, and the math, and I'll use my notes here because it's a little... If you look at the third, look at math, and we say at-risk, not-at-risk, and then we look at the achievement gap. That's the gray column. That's the gap between the at-risk students and the not-at-risk students. What happens is our not-at-risk students are performing at, I'm just going to say, at this level, and here is our at-risk. As they increase, so do our at-risk students. So there's always a gap, and what we're trying to do is to narrow the gap. If we looked at the three-year comparison in math, there was always a gap of 42 because as, if you look at 23, 2023, they were, the not-at-risk were at 82, and they went down to 77% the following year, but so did the at-risk. So there's always a gap between, and what we're trying to do is we're trying to close it. If you look at science, we're closing that gap because in 2023, it was 39%, and we're down to 31%. And that gap between those two that are performing. So for third through fifth, we can say that in our science, we've closed the gap. In math and in reading, we're still at pretty much the same from the previous year. We also look at our economically disadvantaged students in comparison to non-economically disadvantaged, and we see a great decrease in science from a 30% gap to an 18% gap. So our students are performing, well, actually, what happened there is a non-economic disadvantage, they went down to a 52, and so did our ADs down to a 34. So both, both groups were lower. In the reading, in the reading language arts, there was a 21% gap. So we had 2% increase for economic disadvantage. And in our math, it went down to 19. So both in our math, both groups also went down in their performance to meet meets. In six through eight, there was an achievement gap decrease in math, in reading, and in science. If we look at it, we had, we went from a 42, from a forty, I'm sorry, from a 48 to a 39, from a 52 to a 49. And in science, from a 52 to a 41. It was in social studies, and we've seen the work that all of our middle schools are working very hard. And our social studies is one of the content areas that we've been focusing on. And it's evident here that we do have a big gap. Our at-risk students, only 10% of our at-risk students met meets in comparison to not-at-risk, who was 44%. So there was a decrease. Even though our at-risk, there was a slight increase, but not-at-risk, there was a decrease. This is our three-year comparison for economic disadvantage versus non-economic disadvantage. There was a slight increase for populations doing better in all areas. Except, I know our reading, we went down 3%, and so it ended in our science. But if we look at our at-risk, our economic disadvantage, all our in reading, there they were about the same, fifty, they went from a fifty-three to a fifty-two. In science, they went from a forty-two to a forty-four. So there was an increase in social studies. They went from a seventeen to a twenty-four. So our economic disadvantage did perform better than our non-economic disadvantage. But the gap remained the same because our non-EDs went lower, even though the others, the EDs went higher. So it's always a balance, right? One goes up, the other one might go up, or one goes down, and the other one also goes down. And that's what we're looking at. First-time testers. On our first-time testers, this is star end of course, and here we're looking at approaches. Our goal is to have our students graduate. So that's why in the, from third grade through eighth grade, I said meets. Once we get into high school and to end of course, they can graduate if they hit the approaches standard. So our goal is for our students to graduate. If we look here, our algebra for our at-risk students, we're closing the gap for both of those, between the AR, at-risk and not-at-risk. We're also closing the gap in English, too. Again, these are our first-time testers. They went from a sixty-two performance to seventy-one performance in our, for our students. And also, if we look at U.S. history, they went from an eighty-seven to a ninety-two percent for at-risk students. So our teachers are doing a really good job with our, with our end of course and ensuring that our, our at-risk students are receiving the interventions needed to, to perform at the approaches level in our start end of course. These, these are retesters, all considered at-risk. On this one, we're looking at the approaches, and we're looking at to ensure that our at-risk students are meeting that approaches level. So we look at twenty twenty-four, there was a fourteen-point increase in Algebra I on our retesters. So the interventions that are being paid out of our state comp are surely working there with Algebra I. They went from twenty-six percent passing in approaches to forty percent. Our biology went from thirty-nine to seventy percent passing. English I, and English I and English II are the areas that we most have difficulty, our students have difficulty passing. So it's between thirty-one and thirty-two, and that's where they pretty much perform. And that's why they have to either stay, come into our summer school program or stay for interventions. And U.S. history, sixty-five, if you see the three-year comparison, we went from a fifty to a sixty-five, and now we're at seventy-seven percent passing. So our, our interventions that our teachers are doing for our retesters, working with the Office of Academics, is surely making an impact there with our students. Economic disadvantage and versus non-economic disadvantage, it's very close. If you look at, at our, here, we're looking also at the, at the gap. And the gap has gone at single digits in Algebra I, Biology. We still have English II and English, one in English II, like the one before. But look at U.S. history, there's only a three percent gap between our EDs and non-EDs. These are our retesters. Our three-year comparison for retesters. And if we look at, if we look at U.S. history, our economic disadvantage is at eighty-one percent, performing better than our not-economic disadvantage. There is a gap of negative thirty-one percent. So pretty much saying our EDs are performing better than non-EDs. It's also a smaller group with not, not economic disadvantage. English II, our EDs are performing better with negative nine. And again, English I and Algebra are still some of the ones that we're focusing on because it's twenty-four percent in Algebra I and twelve percent in English I. But if you look at Biology, our economic disadvantage is performing better that are not economic disadvantaged with a negative three. So we also have to look at our high school completion for at-risk students. And that is our yellow, the, the top box is just depicted on the bottom graph. But if you look at the at-risk, it's the yellow line. These are the ones that are completing and graduating in four years of at-risk, that are at-risk students, but are still graduating in four years. So they went from an eighty, eighty-eight point one in twenty twenty-one to an eighty, eighty-nine point five, eighty-eight point five, sorry, eighty-eight point five in twenty twenty-two. And last year, we graduated ninety point seven percent of our at-risk students for the graduating class. So if you look at the gap, we're also closing the gap, and our at-risk students are completing high school in four years. And that's our goal, for them to graduate in four years. These are economic disadvantage versus not economic disadvantage. And again, the same trend. We see the gap closing. We have it in twenty twenty-three, ninety-five, ninety-three point eight percent in comparison to ninety-nine point three percent for the non-economic disadvantage. But if you see the trend, it's going into closing the gap and moving higher and ensuring that we, we graduate. Another area that we have to look at is our student dropouts, our population. Our at-risk population has gone significantly down in, in ensuring, that's what we want to see. We want to see the trend going down, that our students are not dropping out of school. So we were, we're down in the at-risk at three point, I'm sorry, can't see that far. Three point one percent, and we went down from four point eight to three point one. And then our not-at-risk has also gone down from one point seven to one point three. Economic disadvantage, we've gone down from one whole point, from three point five to two point five. And we've also seen the increase to, a decrease to zero percent on the non-economic disadvantage. So this is the trend we want to see in both the graduation rate going up and our dropout rate going down. And ensuring that our funds and those funds that we receive for state compensatory education is providing interventions for our students who are at-risk, and they're not dropping out, but graduating in four years. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Mado. Any questions from the board? Mr. Trevino?
Just a comment. That's great work, ma'am, and, and thank you for all of those interventions that you all are putting in place and helping these students at-risk complete their, their high school degree in four years. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Trevino. Also, kudos, what's going on in history, that's really impressive to see that, that increase across both sets. Any questions from the audience? This is a public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Mado. Before we move on to item number seven, let me go ahead. I see Ms. Anaya is here, and I know we have, we may have some new employees here. So let me skip to action item eleven, twelve A. Discuss and take action to approve superintendent's recommendation for the following positions for the 2024, hold on a second here. A registered nurse, do we have? I think her name is Sarah Rodriguez here tonight. Okay, thank you, welcome. I'll take a motion on item eleven, twelve A. Mr. Castillo? Thank you, I have a motion, do I have a second? Mr. Trevino, any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Welcome, Mr. Rodriguez, to Los Fresnos. Thank you so much. Item number, and are you with family as well? They'll stand up as well, thank. Let me see here, one second here. Discuss, action. Discuss and take action to approve superintendent's personnel recommendation for the following positions for 2025, 2026 school year. A, teachers, do I have a motion? Ms. Garcia?
Yes, I'd like to move to approve the superintendent's personnel recommendation for the following position for the 2025, 2026 school year, for a teacher.
Thank you, I have a motion, do I have a second? Mr. Castillo, any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Is Mr. Hector Penaford Jr. here? If you'd stand with your family as well. Welcome back. We're happy you're back, Los Fresnos. Thank you so much. And again, we appreciate you all being here tonight, but we did move the items up. So if you have other obligations, you're welcome to, to leave. If you'd like to stay for the meeting, you're welcome to stay, but welcome. Moving back, district reports, is that where we are? Item number ten, district reports. Dr. Salazar?
Mr. Henderson and members of the board, just, we present to you our financial reports. We'll entertain any questions there. I do want to point out, on the capital projects, under bonds, we have had an expenditure of about twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and ninety for insulation and paint for buildings B and C. And under local capital projects, we did, did have some expenditure since we last met, fifteen thousand, four hundred for geotechnical, two thousand for architectural reimbursements, and about five thousand dollars for PAC, security package for the Performing Arts Center. Otherwise, we do have the twenty-five, twenty-six budget and tax calendar and donation of surplus equipment. And I'll stop there to see if anyone has any questions on any one of those items.
Just, just clarification on page seventy-three, on those last item, fifty thirty-one and thirty-six hundred. It was on page seventy-three, the, that line item, just to, I didn't. Under other sources, I was just trying to remember that, under other sources. That was from last year's budget, is what I was thinking it was. And, yes, that was from last year's budget, was trying to remember it, but I wasn't sure.
You, you want to take this item, please?
So that item, sir, it, that is the transfer that we deal with transportation. So it's internally, where we budget with it one six one and then one nine nine. But within this report, we encompass all those funds, from one hundred all the way to one nine nine. So we see it as an internal transfer. Yes.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda.
An item on there for board advocacy update.
Item ten, for board advocacy update, Mr. Trevino?
I don't have anything else to report. I know that Dr. Salazar and I spoke last time, and we were, he, I believe he shared with all of us. But I'm not sure we're prepared to, to release any of that information at this time and stuff. But we are working on making it easier for our constituents and to access information about our elected officials at the state level. So I'm looking forward to that information being presented later, later on. But we are working towards that to be, enable us to advocate for public schools.
Thank you, Mr. Trevino, for all your work with Slack in Region One on that. Item number eleven, action item number one, discuss. Oh, yes. Thank you so much. Do we have any public item? No one signed up, thank you. Item, action item eleven, action item one, discuss and take action to approve minutes for meetings held on February thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. Take a motion, Mr. Trevino?
Yeah, I moved to approve, I moved that the board approve minutes for meetings held on February thirteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Do I have a second on that? Mr. Maya, any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously. Action item eleven point two. Discuss and take action to approve budget amendment number seven for fiscal year 2024, 2025. Do I have a motion? Ms. Garcia?
I move to approve the budget amendments number seven for the fiscal year 2024 to 2025.
Do I have a second? Mr. Trevino, any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously. Action item three. Discuss and take action toward an agreement contract for the resurfacing of the track at Leo Aguilar Memorial Stadium to Benyon Sports. Do I have a motion? Mr. Castillo? Do we have a motion, do we have a second? Ms. Garcia, discussion? No discussion, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Item number four, discuss and take action to adapt, adopt a resolutions for the Office of the Governor of Criminal Justice Program grants. A bullet-resistant shield grant and B rifle-resistant body armor grant. Do I have a motion? Mr. Trevino?
Yes, Mr. President, I moved that the board adopt resolutions for the Office of the Governor, for the Office of the Governor's Criminal Justice Program grants. A bullet-resistant shield grant and B rifle-resistant body armor grant.
Thank you, Mr. Trevino, I have a motion, do I have a second? Mr. Maya, any discussion? All in favor, if you'll raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Item number five. Item five, discuss and take action to approve revisions to the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six academic calendar. Do I have a motion? Mr. Castillo? Have a motion to prove, do I have a second? Mr. Trevino, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor? Raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Item number six, discuss and take action to approve participation in the lead program with Cameron County District Attorney's Office. Do I have a motion? Ms. Garcia?
I move to approve, oh, I lost my place.
Item six.
Participation in the lead program with Cameron County District Attorney's Office.
Do I have a second? Mr. Trevino, any discussion? Mr. Maya?
Questions, and this, I don't know if this is a preliminary draft. I, I should have gotten a mantra prior to it, and I apologize to the, to the committee for that, or to the board for that. But there's a couple of areas here that use the term, both on the, on the initial that is on our letterhead, and then on the actual resolution or memorandum of understanding, that says on the students that has qualified and been selected. I struggle with been selected because I think that that, just from reading it, and this just may be the verbiage. I don't want to put it in ministry. I don't want to put an administrator or a counselor or a central office administrator in a position where it might be criticized that why did this one be, why was this one selected? And this one not selected? They already have enough to worry about and, and being in that position. If they have to qualify because of certain criteria, is it possible to leave and been selected out, both of this and the other one? Because you would think it would be by something that, it is not subjective and that's what concerns me.
Thank you, Mr. Maya, you bring a, a good point. The criteria was set by the District Attorney's Office. This is what I'm willing to consider, so we can just change the, the language to, to students who meet the criteria as, as specified by the District Attorney's Office.
And also a clarification on the counseling sessions for the parents. Because I think it says two per month and it's running from mid-March, the way I read it, and I may have read it incorrectly, to late May. So is it two for the six weeks of the program or is it actually two per month?
Yeah, we're actually using a template, the program has been going on a little longer. We, we're coming in on the tail end of it, if you will. But I'm gonna let Mr. McDonough speak to how, how we can work that out.
He, he, the DA was really working with us and it was, they're fast-tracking it so that we could get the seniors, this group of seniors right now. So everyone, very good point that Mr. Maya brought up as far as the selection process. They did allow us to put all seniors in this cohort, so no one was turned down. So everyone, everyone qualified, basically. But it's two per, per month, but if it's short that month, it's half. He basically said, make it half of whatever they did. But he, he's basically working with us, the DA said, I'm gonna work with you as long as you show that they're attending the sessions and they're making that effort, they're passing the, the tests, he's going to in the, in the end dismiss the indictment.
Yeah, I think it's a great program. When, when I first heard of it, I was wondering why just the vaping had been selected. But it's quite clear and, and once you read the, the memorandum of, of understanding, why it was selected and not other felonies. So I don't want to be, for y'all to interpret that I'm against the program. I just don't want to put an administrator or somebody else in that, in that position if we can avoid it.
Thank you, Mr. McDonough, and thank you, Mr. Maya, for bringing that perspective to the board. Okay, we've had a motion and a second, any other discussion? Will vote, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Item number seven, discuss and take action to approve the tutoring assistance program contract service proposal for the 2024, 2025 school year, do I have a motion? Mr. Trevino?
Yes, Mr. President, I moved that the board approve the tutoring assistance program contract service proposal for the 2024, 2025 school year.
Do I have a motion, do I have a second? Mr. Maya, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Item number eight, discuss and take action to approve agreement contracts with independent contractors for professional learning services. Do I have a motion? Mr. Maya?
Mr. President, I move that we approve agreements slash contracts with independent contractors for professional learning, professional learning services.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second, Mr. Trevino? Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Item nine, discuss and take action to approve student out-of-state travels. A, Sea Perch Robotics, May 31st to June 1st, 2025, College Park, Maryland. Do I have a motion? Mr. Trevino?
Yes, Mr. President, I moved that the board approve student out-of-state travel for A, Sea Perch Robotics, May 31st through June 1st, 2025, at College Park, Maryland.
Thank you, Mr. Trevino, do I have a second? Ms. Garcia? Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor, raise your hands. Motion carries unanimously. Item number 10, discuss and take action to authorize board presidential, board presidents' travel to the Holsworth Center to participate in Leadership Development Program culminating activity. Do I have a motion? Mr. Trevino?
Yes, Mr. President, I moved that the board authorize board presidents' travel to the Holsworth Center to participate in Leadership Development Program culminating activity.
Do I have a motion for Mr. Trevino, do I have a second? Mr. Maya, any discussion? I would just like to add, Dr. Salazar, thank you for bringing Holsworth Program to La Fresno. I know a lot of your staff have taken advantage of it, so thank you for that. No further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Item 11, discuss and take action to approve the 2025, 2026 work calendar for the 260 employees, do I have a motion? Ms. Garcia?
Move to approve the work calendar for the 260 employees.
I have a motion. Thank you very much. For 2025, 2026, I have a motion by Ms. Garcia, do I have a second? Mr. Maya, any discussion? Mr. Maya?
Do we need clarification on that, that's 260 days instead of 260 employees?
Yeah, I think that is a good point. We left out the word days, 260-day calendar for employees who work, employees who work 260 days, mostly our waxing crews.
Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Item 12 and 13, we, item 13, closed session. Item, announcements, Dr. Salazar, item 14.
Mr. Henderson, members of the board, on Monday, March 24th at 6:00 PM, we'll have a team-building session in this building. Wednesday, March 26th at 12:00 PM. Noon, we do have the LFU College and Career Fair. And then in athletics, we have softball on Friday, March 16th at 6:30 against San Benito at home. Friday, March 28th, Lady Falcons will also play host to the Harlingen, to Harlingen. I'm not sure whether that's Cardinals or South, you know? Cardinals, alright. And baseball on Friday, March 28th at 6:30. They will host the San Benito Greyhounds. But tomorrow, they will be traveling to P S A to play at 6:30 PM. Those are all the announcements we have at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Salazar, no further business, the meeting's adjourned at 6:59.